Obviously, you know, there continues to be lots of calls with different groups. This morning, we had our Somni Valley Mayor's meeting. We had some discussions about the OPMA order from the governor, which obviously the the four corners of the legislature extended that for us till May 31st. And we're hoping that they'll potentially come in a special session and make some changes to allow us to do work long term, online and virtually, with still providing adequate public access. As many mayors across the county are discussing, it's, we're going to be running up against deadlines and public hearings and what have you. And as development reopens, which we know it's going to even more, we're going to need to be able to have those processes. So we're cautiously optimistic that they will address that issue. Northern Mayor's meeting this morning was a lot about budgets. And again, you know, it was very comforting to hear that we're, when listening to other cities that were in a better position than others, I think folks have already heard Bothell's had to do a lot of layoffs. But they had a much different situation with severe structural deficits. And then they're refusing to use their reserves. So they do have reserves that can help out with the situation, but they are refusing to use it. Borrowers markets, of course, are beginning to to open. I think a couple of the key, one of the key meetings I wanted to share with council is on the 1406 Affordable Housing Tax Money. I had a conference call with Hope Link last week to discuss if they would be even interested in distributing that money for us. We're getting approximately $9,000, which isn't very much. And I believe conversations with council have surrounded around utility assistance and what have you. And so they have a program and actually contacted Shorelink to do just that right now. And they are very interested in helping provide that type of support to our community with that tax money. In addition, we, during that Hope Link conversation, I also had a discussion about if we do get, if we are able to, if we have additional CARES Act funding that we can put towards the community, would they be willing to help out? And they are. So I'm very pleased that Hope Link is a very willing partner in providing the service to the community. And they help, they assist everyone from kids on up to seniors. So they have a well-developed program. A constituent had asked about taking donations or broadband to help people pay their broadband bills. Hope Link doesn't currently have that program. A lot of the tax money they receive is limited where that's not specified as an essential service. But we're looking into that to see if that might be something we can add to augment and help those that might be lower income and having trouble accessing the internet for their kids or for their work. I think everyone's aware that WAVE did develop a program, but it is not applicable to existing customers, even if they're low income. So I've had some comments about that and am working to see if any of that can be changed. But, you know, to Chief's point about funding liabilities, as we look at the CARES Act funding and how we're able to distribute it and use it in the city, you know, staff and employees do come first and making sure that they're whole, making sure that we're able to retain them. And hopefully, our expenses won't be too much so that we can provide some additional help. Lots of cities are doing it right now. We're in a different position. But I think it's really important to provide some level of stability for folks in our community where we can. Coming up, you know, I think, as we're talking about, Sean didn't talk about too much about the reopening, but, you know, state parks and other parks reopen today. We got different information out of the phase four discussion officially than we had in our mayor's meeting. But in general, I think it's pretty clear that those businesses that bring in big tax revenue are the ones that will be opening up first as they get their rules in place and approved plans. Then we will, one of the things we'll be reaching out to and have discussions with the fifth district legislators this morning about is our small businesses. We do have many small businesses that only have one or two people working in them right now, and they're pretty much owner operated. And I believe that those businesses are likely to be able to open safely with specific safeguards in place. And so I'll be reaching out to our legislative delegation again tomorrow to put a plug for those businesses being able to open before the larger brick and mortar, say Eddie Bowers and what have you. I think that we, the CARES Act, really missed the boat on some of the small businesses. And while people weren't able to get help, it wasn't enough. And larger corporations were able to dig into that money, which was not the intent. So we're going to see what we can do about that. Lots of letters going out to the legislature. It seems like every time we get a request, you have a few hours to do it and get it out the door. I've shared those with council and I'm happy to answer any questions on those. And then just, you know, to Sean's point, we're, we're working on the reopening plans and hopefully we'll have something out with parks and what have you soon. Just let me double check real quick to make sure I'm not missing anything here. Yeah, I think that's, I think that's the gist of it at this point. I don't think I have anything else that hasn't been already discussed this evening. So if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to entertain them. Okay, seeing none, I will log back into my computer to get the agenda back up here.
And while you're doing that, I have quick questions because I see three hands that are still up. Councilmember McHenry, Napland, and Mr. Hurt. So I just want to make sure.
I can't see those.
Well, that's because they all just went away.
All right. So we didn't have any council members that wanted to speak tonight. So do we have any council committees that would like to report? Councilmember Hoag.
Briefly, I want to correct something I said at the last meeting. I think I said that the Finance Committee is meeting weekly now, but it's not weekly. It's every other week. We did have a meeting last Wednesday. We have another one a week from tomorrow. And I do want to thank the staff, Laura Thomas and Steve Menaschewski and Dana Mason for spending so much time with us. Really going over the budget amendments. So I think it was a really good meeting. So I don't know if the rest of the committee wants to share any of their thoughts, but I thought it was very successful.
I'm not seeing any hands up. So we'll move on to administration update. Ms. Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It'll feel a little bit like community development tonight, but it's really because of COVID and changes that are happening pretty rapidly as part of the phase one through four. So as you know, last week, the governor opened up the construction industry. It's a partial reopen, but it really does allow quite a bit of work to move forward. We created kind of an informational sheet and got that prepped for internal and external communication. We are still continuing to see projects move forward. So Walden's going to start construction here this summer. Rio Vista is starting back up. They've actually started work. Willow Ridge, which is a project to the north that's being worked on by the bank, has had meetings with us and they're going to finish that project up. We are continuing to receive permits and issue them. So we'll continue to monitor that as we said we would do as part of that budget amendment process and moving forward and really look at that. We're also working with two projects that are on one, one of them's on 145th and Main, and the other one's on 145th and what will be First Avenue for two new projects that look like they're going to come in. And then we do, you know, one of our challenges during this time under the governor's order, and it still continues to be a bit of a challenge. And it's not just for our land use permits, but just in general for us to hold public hearings in this era. We are going to move forward with holding Landy's public hearings. We have three that are backed up in the queue and we've got about five that we'll have over the next couple of months. So you'll see a notice and what we're going to do so that we can garner more public comment is we're going to screen out a little bit more than we normally would. And then we'll push it through social media and we'll have it go through Zoom and phone. And then we'll also put a note on there if somebody needs special accommodations. So we feel like that's a safe way to move forward. So I'm working on that with Anne Marie. So I wanted to thank her for that. I'm also working with Anne Marie on what I call voluntary tolling agreements. And that is an agreement that is like, for example, if you have 90 or 120 days to process a permit, if an applicant will voluntary allow us to take additional time. So stay tuned on that. We're still looking at the overall tolling agreement. But that really, part of it has to really come from the legislature because where our issues are at are really in the state statutory area of the review clocks. I guess some good news that I heard at the planning director's meeting is SMPs and comp plans have been pushed back one additional year. So I think that's, you know, it can be good or bad, but the good thing is, is that it helps us kind of rebound some of our reserves that we're going to need, you know, in the future. So we won't have to budget in this next biennium for that, but in that following biennium, we would. We're looking at getting our phase three buildable lands request in, which goes into King County PSRC and growth targets. So stay tuned for that. I know it sounded really like planning. I apologize, but there's just a lot that's happened. So if you have any questions, I'm Ben.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Thomas? All right, I'm not seeing any. So thank you. We will go ahead and move on. We do not have any presentations or public hearings this evening. So we'll move on to item number two of new business agenda bill 20-35, Westcott Duval Village Commercial Application Extension Request for Discussion and/or Decision. So Community Development, Ms. Thomas.
And it's, I, if I apologize if I said it's not for decision, it's for discussion. If that's what I had in my agenda bill.
That's, that's fine. It's just, it's what's listed on the agenda. So I'm reading it as appropriate.
Thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen really quick. Can everybody see the community development slide?
Yes, it's up.
Okay, thank you. So this evening, we have a agenda bill to move forward. It is for the Duval Village project, which is owned by Westcott. And it's related to the time, commercial development, timing, extension request. I wanted to provide just a little photo of the area. Previously, they were, this was known as parcel A, but as part of the final flat, it is parcel C1. So they did submit a request actually a couple of months ago, and we're just now processing it. And under our mixed use code, which I provided in your packet, it allows an applicant to come in that's doing a phased plan and they're doing a phased plan. They have a development agreement. And our 1408 allows the owner to request an extension to ensure successful commercial development. We've had this piece of code in existence from, since about 2005. And we've had other projects that have had to make this request. As part of the request, we've consistently asked for some information on kind of what's the market out there. So a market analysis essentially, and what are the market conditions moving forward as well? We did request a update to that letter that better demonstrates the market conditions in Duval. And so we should have that coming up. So I'll bring that forward to the next council meeting. We do have an initial recommendation that would allow the five-year extension. We did want to put a few recommended conditions on it, and that would be for Westcott to bring back forward on a yearly basis, a market analysis and a marketing plan for that parcel. If there are any questions, I'm available to to take them. And I wanted to let you know that Melanie Davies from Westcott is also available on this conference. So she can, she can answer any questions as well. You have Councilmember Ms. Hoag.
So my only question is, in light of this virus, do you think it'd be good to get more frequent, like, market evaluations or?
I, if you're asking me my professional opinion, I think, you know, once a year is probably good. For the first two years, obviously DFA is utilizing their C1 parcel with a possibility of extending it. So this is the C1 parcel where the existing barn is located. But we definitely want them to be, you know, marketing it and looking at developing out that site. The goal at the end of the day is for us to have a successful residential development, but also a successful commercial development there. Are there any other questions?
I did want to say that Melanie wants to speak. But I also wanted to mention that I am noticing a lot of pending sales in the new construction currently. And I just don't know how this virus is going to affect them, if they're going to be able to finish them and close on them. And so that's, I'm curious.
I have a question. And I believe the applicant also wants to speak, it looks like, Laura. I'm not sure if you can see all of the participants when you're sharing.
When I'm sharing my screen, somebody's going to have to call on people because you're correct, I can't, I can't see everybody.
Councilmember Red Nicky first. And then it's up to, I don't know if Laura had scheduled Ms. Davies to speak. I'm fine with it if, if that is what Laura intended. So first Councilmember Red Nicky.
So in regards to commercial development, I guess my question is, and it's very true because I don't really do business in town. I had to go outside of town because we just don't have that population. So if we do give them an extension, but does that mean that in five years, if our population is not to those levels as stated in the letter, do they still go ahead and develop the commercial property? Or how does that, how does that work?
So that's currently the way that policy 1408 works is that we've given them, they're five years in, and they're requesting the additional five years of that time period that's allowed. After that, I'd have to work with our city attorney, but they're supposed to come in with an application within that 10-year period for commercial development. But you can't, you can't necessarily force a commercial, you know, commercial, successful commercial development. But this is a longstanding, a longstanding policy. So we bring, you know, we bring it forward. And if we're at a point, like say in year nine, that there might be an issue, then we would need to come back and talk to council.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lingle, and then council, oh, I'm sorry, first Melanie Davies had had her hands up, and then we'll go Councilmember Lingle and Councilmember. So Melanie, you're welcome to speak. And if you could just put your name and who you're with on the record, since we are visual this evening on video, that would be fantastic.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, this is Melanie Davies from Westcott Homes about Duval Village. Basically, I just wanted to to speak to the commercial market currently. When I submitted the initial request, that was in January, knowing that our approval would otherwise expire in, I believe, July 5th, so in two months. Clearly, we can't develop the commercial parcel within the next two months. So, you know, the request for an extension is necessary. And with the situation currently with COVID-19, it's even more essential that we're able to be granted the commercial application extension. If the market were to change in a year or two and we had an opportunity to submit an application, it would still take, you know, a year or possibly more to process that application to be able to even start construction. So five years is, you know, at the point that we're at right now, five years is not really a long time. So I guess that was what I wanted to say. Thank you.
All right. I've lost track of the order. I believe it was Councilmember Lingle and then Napland. You have everybody on my screen right now, so I apologize.
Oh, no, you're right on, right on the money with the order. I have a question related to the, Westcott and the city are allowing DFA to encumber the property for two years with an allowance for consideration further extension. Can you elaborate on exactly what that means? And specifically, allowing DFA to encumber the property, what does that part mean?
So.
Is the two, for two years with an allowance for further extension, are you talking about actually amending the development agreement? Because that makes more time in addition to the 10 years.
No. So as you remember, earlier this year, we've allowed Duval Village to stay on parcel C1. And that agreement also has to be agreed to with Westcott. However, Westcott, I don't know what agreement they have with them within the two-year period. So if, say, or even the three-year period, if they have somebody that they want to sell their property to and it's going to develop it, I would assume that Westcott has the ability to do that. But what I'm saying is, is we will allow the encumbrance of that property, of that C1, for two years.
Okay. I have to think about that, but I don't have to do it today. So.
Yeah, that was part of the, the barn, the house that the barn is in now. Yeah.
Yeah. And, and the, them, them needing a special exception from us.
Great.
Am I up?
Yes. Okay. So I just want to say, Director Thomas, how much I appreciate the two comments, the conditions that you are recommending, and I would support those. For me, you know, when we approve all of this residential development, we really need it to coincide with another revenue source besides the property tax that will come from those homes, because that is not sustainable to provide the services that are needed when we out those residents. So really, we need to make an effort to get those commercial sites developed so that we can be a sustainable community. And understanding that there is a marketing plan in effect, I think, is, is important. Because I don't want the clock to just keep running out and no effort being made. And so having something like this, I just really appreciate you adding that. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. For some reason, I'm not, okay, any other comments that I'm not seeing? If so, I can't, for some reason, it's not showing me everything again. So.
I see Matt Iyer and Mike Remington.
Okay, go for it. Matthew Iyer, please.
Yeah, I mean, my only, I mean, for one, the, the letter of statement of, of, you know, market conditions, I, I could see why we want it to be updated. I mean, they have set less than 7,000 people on here. And all you got to do is Google population of Duval and to know that it's more than 7,000. And I guess the issue I have is this property and this development, I mean, we've been, the city of Duval, and this, this thing goes back. And this thing, this, the development agreement on this is extensive and very much a, you know, a deal. And, you know, up till this point, I think I've pretty much, I've felt that it was, you know, smart to lay low on this one, just to hopefully get it. So this thing gets built at some point and gets moved through. But we have gotten to the point where we've, we've, we're almost, we're liberated from our constraints in that it's beyond a point of, of where it can get us too much as a city. And you know, I, I think the fact that, that these, this thing runs out in two years is, I mean, it's been in place. I mean, the development, the, the development agreement has been in place. What, I'm sorry, Laura, just for reference, when, how long's the development agreement been in place?
About five years.
Five years. So, but the total, the historical property development.
Twenty-five years almost. Actually, it's probably, sorry, it's that, oh, I've been here longer. It's probably, it went back to the mid 90s. Oh, yeah.
And, and I guess that's what I think of when I think of this, this project and this site. I think there's been a lot of time for people to develop it. And I mean, clearly, the market conditions thing writes itself now with the COVID conditions going on. But I, I like the idea of adding more conditions that make sure we see what we, we want to see and not put ourselves in a similar position that, that Duval's, you know, kind of been stuck with outcomes that we're not so much, that we made back in the past and we've been stuck with. So I mean, I think it'd be unreasonable not to, because, not to move forward with this. But what, what would occur if this didn't, didn't move forward?
I'll let Anne Marie, I'm not sure, let's see, I can't see her on here. I'll let.
I'm not really thinking about, but just in terms of the global understanding of what we're talking about here.
So technically, our code grants it if you have a phasing plan. It's, you know, I think one thing that her and I talked, I'm sorry, that Anne Marie and I talked about is this is likely really also, it could be perceived as administrative as well, because the code is pretty clear that if they meet a certain, you know, if they provide certain information, that it's just granted, it doesn't require a development agreement amendment. But the planning department's always brought this request forward. This is probably the third request since I've been here for an extension. Some, some directors have just let it roll through and never even brought anything back. But the last couple of times, we've brought it back to council. You know, I really believe that, you know, there, the market will come. Duval and the area is getting more active. We're, we're starting to see more people in it. And that parcel is situated really well. It has, you know, access to the trail. So I think at some point, as you start to see those homes come in, I do believe there will be a market there. The, you know, our commercial market, as you know, has struggled. We build a commercial building or a non-residential building about once, seven and a half to nine years. And so us having two more projects in just in pre-application for non-residential development, and one of them is actual just commercial, is, I think, showing forward now that we're starting to see our area grow enough to start to need other services that you don't have to go out of town. So I do believe that this parcel has a good opportunity, if it's done well and it's marketed, to move forward in the five-year period. Because our expectation isn't necessarily that they build it out in 10 years, but they're in the process before that 10-year, that 10-years is up.
Yeah, and I think, and that makes sense, and, and I'm on board with this. I, my only, I think there's a general, my interpretation of public opinion on projects, you know, old projects, they get, folks get frustrated when they're, when we, you know, say, well, there's nothing we can do about it. It's been in the pipeline for years and years. And oh, yeah, by the way, they're, you know, they don't pay, they pay less in fees and so forth and so on. So I guess I would like to see a little bit more of a robust information as you requested, because it looks like this is pretty, pretty light. So with that being said, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Iyer.
Thank you. Mayor Precum Remington was next.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for Director Thomas. So the, especially with market conditions, the extension seems appropriate. How, how does that affect any change in codes that we might have? any change in codes that we might have? Will it be required to meet, you know, when they actually start building, I assume that they'll have to meet whatever the current codes or environmental restrictions or, or improvements required at that time?
So they have, you know, they have a vested development agreement right now. And so when that runs out, which will actually happen before the end of the 10 years, because it's based on preliminary plat and their final plat and from final plat, which was late last year. And then there, it's five years going forward. So they probably, there is probably incentive for them to actually bring in a building permit before that expiration. But if, if it expires and it's in that, say, that last six or eight months, then they would come under, under new code and, you know, that new commercial portion of the code. So design, parking, those types of things. But the lot's already there. It's already configured.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just need to make a note, we need to make a motion if council wants to continue this meeting past 9:30. We forgot to do that during the last meeting. And we have three additional items of business on the agenda.
Mayor, I would move, Mike Remington, I had moved that we extend our meeting past 9:30.
Second, Matt Iyer, second move, motion.
Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. We do not have any noes. The motion is unanimous. So did we have any more questions or comments from Ms. Thomas on this item? Okay, seeing none. I think we will move on to Agenda Bill 20-36, Doherty Farmhouse Roof Replacement for Discussion and/or Decision. Mr. Lenishewski.
Can we just approve this? I thought I heard a mumble. Good evening, everyone. Steve Lenishewski, Public Works. Fairly straightforward grant issued and, and ready to be administered from King County or Culture for roof replacement. No budget adjustment per se is needed, just recognition of the expenditure as we will absorb some of the, looking at my side note here, sorry, some of the costs that are already allocated within the repair and maintenance for the fund that we were not expecting to use. And that's a $27,565 grant to do the $32,625 roof.
Councilmember Napland?
Quick, I have a cedar roof. And I remember when we did ours, we did heavy shakes and we did treated. And when I look at the bid, it looks like just a generic cedar shake. And we want it to last a long time, and maybe I'm overlooking something, but I, I'm trying to understand what we're putting on there.
They tried to maintain period correct, so there were no reinforced shingles with certain, you know, materials and chemicals and stuff like that. So it's pretty straight up as it would have been. I guess unfortunately, because there is better technology out there today, even for cedar, like you state. But that's the, that's the sentiment on the facility.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other council members with questions or comments?
I move that, this is Matt Iyer, Councilmember Iyer. I move that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Doherty Farmhouse Roof Replacement Contract with Bruce, Bruce's Roofing LLC not to exceed $32,625.86.
Councilmember Iyer, real quickly, would you like to suspend the rules of the three-touch before you make that motion?
Sure. I move we suspend the rules for three touches today on this item.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Please say no. It's unanimous, so no roll call needed. And go ahead, Councilmember Iyer.
Move that we approve, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Doherty Farmhouse Roof Replacement Contract with Bruce's Roofing LLC not to exceed $32,625.86.
Second, Amy McHenry.
All right. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. We do not have any noes, so roll call vote is not needed. The motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Agenda Bill 20-37, King County CDBG Grant Application for Discussion and/or Decision, Public Works. Mr. Lenishewski.
Evening again, everyone. So I'm going to switch screens on the project by half here. And I have no idea what I'm seeing. I think you see what I see, full screen. So I know we've talked about many things needing to get done. And when I say that, I mean prioritizing and, and understanding what the needs of the community are, trying to put together a comprehensive list for, for programs and, and gaps specifically for sidewalks. We do have a lot of work to do, but I just felt compelled that it is our job to bring things forward. Certainly, it's okay to say no, but I'm not doing my job once I bring it forward. And this is something that was reached out to us from King County Community Development Block Grants Group to just, to go after a grant. I'm not sure how many of you remember, in May of 17, the city went after this grant and it was not awarded. As I mentioned in the staff report or the Agenda Bill, the county itself is hopeful the city applies. They do expect a reduction in applicants just based on the current conditions with staffing in certain agencies and other activities going on due to COVID. So they weren't suspending any programs. They're moving forward. So this is just an opportunity for the city. So with that said, the grant application is for curb gutter sidewalk landscape strip within an existing right-of-way on the 142nd Place alignment. So on the screen to, oh boy, it's backwards like a car mirror. So my left is 275th, the right is east, if that makes sense. 282nd, 142nd would be the entrance to the Mobile Home Park. The road vertically in the center, running north-south is 278. So that is the project's alignment. We have very few areas in the city that actually can qualify for CDBG funding because of low-income housing and surveys that must be, must be completed. The only other alternatives that are available to the city are more ADA ramps in the downtown area, as the city's done in the years past. And then up here on this section of roadway, I'm just going to skip to the section real quick and I'll go back to some notes. Obviously, very rural, Crown Road, no curb gutter sidewalk, ditching to both sides. It is a 60-foot right-of-way. There is 17 feet approximately of right-of-way between edge of asphalt and then to the north, where you could install the section shown below. It is listed for a bike lane on our plans, curb gutter and sidewalk under transportation improvement programming on missing links. It's not specifically called out on any one project. I guess I covered most of that. The grant max request is 280, $280,000. It's eligible for design and construction. We did not update the estimate that was provided in the packet. I didn't think there was much merit at this point. It is a preliminary application. Should we be awarded the grant? Obviously, there's another decision to be made. So this is just the council's preliminary decision to let us apply for it. Not that we wouldn't seriously consider it, should we be awarded it, but nonetheless, part of the process. And I think the numbers we will better understand shortly when we bid our other sidewalk project. So that's something to consider as we do have some time to now and when the granting agency in the fall issues notice of award or non-award selection. So at that, that this time, we expect 466 would be the older estimate. We're sticking with that for the time being. That's 166 out of pocket. And I put a little bit out of storm for $20,000 for the capital elements within storm. There are some available resources which are unallocated, but again, undesignedated for other items citywide. Those numbers are estimates, because we are in the middle of updating our budgets as we speak. So with that said, I will open this up for questions, discussions. There you go. And I'm going to leave it to Jody to call names, because I can't see the screen.
I have a question, Brad Nicky.
Councilmember Brad Nicky, and then I see Councilmember Henry's, McHenry's hand.
So Steve, is there also in the plan consideration for parking along that road?
So no, there would not be consideration for parking in the existing 60 feet of right-of-way, based on the center line alignment on that road. Putting in the utility, I'm sorry, putting in the bike lane and the sidewalk and curb and gutter landscape strip puts us pretty much close to the edge of the existing right-of-way. We have been working with the Mobile Home Park manager. They do have site internally to put some vehicles, but again, they're fairly constrained. And each lot is managed as, as kind of however they want. So I'm not sure if there's more efficient parking internally, but that is an issue for the city, because it's non-improved right-of-way. It does get fairly messy. We have had, you know, I know, if Chief's still on, we have had, you know, our own issues out there, towing vehicles, abandoned vehicles recently, you know, human waste abandoned and left for the staff to deal with. So it does need addressing. And we have been in discussions with the Mobile Home Park on drainage due to last, you know, this last winter flooding that we had. So we're working with them. Probably not a perfect answer, but a very good question. I didn't put any notes on there, so thank you.
I, I guess, I guess I ask the question because I know in the Mobile Home Park that there is a lot of multifamilies living in those units.
Right.
They have kids who drive cars and that sort of thing.
Yeah.
All right. I see four hands up. The question, but I cannot tell who's up first. I have Councilmember Napland, Councilmember Iyer, Councilmember Lingle, and Councilmember McHenry. So if your hand is still up, please feel free to ask your question or provide your comment to Mr. Lenishewski. And Councilmember Napland would be first.
Okay. I, I don't know if I was the first hand, but I guess I will ask my question. First, a comment. I agree I've walked that stretch. It's not ideal, especially with the cars parked there. You're basically walking in the middle of the street to traverse the area. Because there's always cars parked that I, I, I do feel a little bit concerned. Those cars will be displaced, and where will they go? Do we have a plan? Do we have an idea? I, I do worry a little about designing something that would remove that much parking. There is, I mean, just a lot of even commercial, like vehicles that people use for their job, landscaping vehicles. There's a lot of vehicles. So anyway, I just, I, I hope we can have more of a conversation with the community before we approve this. It's just another one of those things of, and it sounds like you sort of have it, just being proactive, because I could see this removing all that parking being a big issue. Even though I'm guessing it was never really intended to be parking, but that's what it is. And then, could you explain again why that this money could not be used for something like Third Avenue? I just know we're going to get a lot more traffic there. You know, we have other places. What, could you, I, I, I just didn't understand.
I'm not, I'm not paused. Okay. So the Community Development Block Grant Group needs certain levels of household income, which are very low, to qualify. And the density in the downtown area isn't there. Some of those lots are still, you know, 75, everything in Old Town is 25 by 100 for the most part, unless it's on the corners. And usually, there's two to three lots per unit in Old Town, and the density just doesn't get to the amount needed to qualify. Because it has to have a pretty high number of homes, and there's over 150 homes in the Mobile Home Park. And they usually answer the surveys that we need for, for household income, and they usually qualify, because the number is pretty low. And I apologize, I don't have a number. But it is, it is well below the, I think it's well below 50% average of King County household income, very low, and not any areas, for the most part, qualify. Except this. And then the commercial core can have some improvements.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Iyer, you're next.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree the parking, I agree with Councilmember Brad Nicky. The concerning thing is parking, and it would be kind of, I don't know, it'd be very privileged, privileged of us to get a grant to help folks with, you know, that qualify and low-income place and then take their parking away. But, I mean, it clearly would be an improvement. That would be my main concern. And I'm sorry to muddy the waters, to jump in and kick the water around. But clearly, the Mobile Home Park uses the parking. Clearly, the reason they qualify is because of the Mobile Home Park. May, I don't know if there's any possibility that we could try to figure out another element to this project. It could provide, you know, add to some parking, because it's going to go someplace else, too. So.
Yeah, I don't disagree. And I think maybe under the project charter that I was working on, I'll certainly list that as a liability. And some items to consider, they will always increase cost. And again, I can make that note, too. But if we do shift the roadway, you know, to get parking on one side, we may not have to shift it much. We do have exceptions to not do landscape strips based on, you know, existing conditions, topography, sensitive areas. So we don't have a sensitive area study yet. There is some suspect area in, I think you can see my pointer as I move it. Is that a fact? Yeah. So it does get softened here. It is storm-related, so you still may be able to shift the road. And, you know, if we have to shift things to the south or roadway alignment to then garner a little bit of additional space for parking and omit the landscape strip and then put the sidewalk in, we'd have to figure out street trees and those kinds of things through the code. But there might be alternatives to present, if, you know, obviously, parking is a major issue. I don't think anything dissuades us from applying with these changes to, to, to the application.
Yeah. With, with that in mind, because I would be in support of doing this with the idea of that we're not creating a parking situation for these folks in this Mobile Home Park. I'd be in support of it.
Thank you, Councilmember Iyer. Councilmember McHenry?
Yeah, I, so first, I just want to state, I like this idea of this improvement. But yeah, Councilmember Brad Nicky asked my original thought, my original question, is concerned that that's traditionally been used for parking. If there was any possible way to still allow for parking, I don't know if it's allowed to delete a landscape strip, like you said, or if that even gets us close enough to having enough room. But I think for me to see it go forward, I would want a really clear plan on what kind of parking will be available for, for the people that live there. But it is a concern, because I know a lot of people walk this way. And, and I don't know that it's super safe right now. Your green marker, I don't know if it's just, it kind of extends all the way around that corner, and at the top left, that top Y or T intersection, would the, is the idea that the sidewalk would kind of just curve around and then end and slope off? Or is there any little sidewalk or safety crosswalk improvement? That intersection, the residents have like spray painted the stop line, because I think it's kind of a problem for them. I know I've mentioned it before, but I didn't know if there was any kind of improvement that could help with crosswalks connected to this, or if it's strictly mobility.
So again, funding is only 260, so we're going to be doing likely, you know, quite a bit of work out of our own pocket. So we can do whatever we would like to do. And this is one of those things why we have standards. That subdivision was built by a developer, and it has that three-foot asphalt kind of shoulder outside the gutter pan, which doesn't even have a real gutter. So, you know, there is technically a pathway there that can segregate you from the travelway, but it is not a standard by any means. But we thought, you know, we could at least get, the overall goal is to get from, you know, the east side all the way to the west side of 278, where we have full sidewalk. At least there was a pathway here, and this is a pretty decently walked corridor on 278 that does not have a lot of vehicle or traffic, as opposed to, you know, 275th and 142nd. There's not a capital project listed as far as either A, realigning, or B, There's not a capital project listed, as far as either A, realigning, or B, treating this as a, a different type of project, where maybe you extend two seventy-eighth as the through road, and you have these side legs come in as more of a T, and they get the stop sign. That might actually keep less people off the road vehiculally, because stop signs tend to, you know, transportation theory, delay you. You wanna go as, you know, normally as routinely and quickly as possible in a car. So, you know, that may have someone go down two seventy-fifth and to Big Rock, instead of cutting through this area to go out to the ball fields or whatnot. There are other considerations, but there's no plan. We have no tip I plan on this, except for missing sidewalks. So, the intent was to bring it to the terminus, where we can safely, you know, meet it into the existing pathway, and then terminate this phase, and then try it for another grant on the second phase, which is the yellow area down, down the road.
Okay. And I, I totally appreciate you bringing stuff like this forward. I enjoy looking into these things, too, and, and thinking of possibilities. I was curious, can you double-dip grants? I mean, I don't know if this would qualify for safe walks to school, or whatever that's called.
That's open right now, too, and there's not really a school within the normal distance that they like for safe routes to school, but we can certainly check. I don't know that double-dipping is anything to not attempt, so.
I wasn't sure bus stops counted for safe routes to school, or if it's just more people living close to a school.
Yeah. Normally, it's proximity, and with our, and then they do weigh in on what our district does, as far as operations, and our district does, does walk within a quarter mile, right? They don't bus. Maybe a half mile, I have to double-check, but, so yeah, this one's way outside that.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we have Mayor Purtemeington, and it looks like Chief Hert has his hands up, hand up as well. So, Mayor Purteme?
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, could you pull up the picture that shows the cars parked?
And again, while we're sitting here, I did go through, and again, King County snapshot is never consistent on day and time. But if you, you know, when you're bored, if you go to IMAP, and you toggle through, so you can go all the way back, you know, to two thousand, there's like one car, two thousand and two, there's two cars, two thousand and five, there's two cars, two thousand and seven, there's two cars, two thousand and nine, two, two thousand and twelve, three. So, it, you can see over time, there are more and more people are parking. In two thousand and thirteen, you've got six. You got me started, Mr. Remington, sorry. There's about, about ten in fifteen, seventeen has about the same, and nineteen has quite a bit. So, anyway, there you go. Your question.
Here's the question, cars are obviously parked on both sides. It looks from the preliminary that doing it on what would be the right side, right? Some of that's north side of the road is most appropriate. Is there a reason we couldn't do it on the other side of the road?
The other side of the road, on both ends, has no pathway or sidewalk to marry into. So, if you come from the east slash south, the Glen, Cutters Glen neighborhood, I believe, has, is the name of it, but there is an actual curb gutter and sidewalk on that east side, which ties into the right side of the picture frame here.
Yeah.
So, we, but again, we can shift things and maybe make, you know, gravel parking even on the shoulder, or omit gravel parking on the shoulder, if I have to move the road over a couple of feet, and then omit the landscape strip to fit everything in with bike lane and parking and sidewalk. That's certainly an option.
Yeah. Well, I like the overall project. I know several people, when they exercise, go along here, and it's, you know, when there are cars there, it's a little more risky for folks out walking with baby carriages or, or running. So, I, I like the overall project. I think we're headed in the right direction, and I'd certainly support going for the grant.
Great.
Don't let class, maybe?
Thank you, Mayor Purtemeington. Actually, we had, Chief Hert had his hand up as well, so I have, I think he has some comments to add.
Thanks, Mayor. So, so Steve, on the same picture, this is the area, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the area where we, we are struggling with, two weeks ago, with the parking ordinance change, where we had, we had vehicles parked there that was preventing public works from actually doing their job for several weeks, and that, that is maintaining the, the vegetation, correct?
Yeah. We've had vegetation management issues, and again, the unfortunate side effect, maybe it's COVID slash economy-related or not, but you know, seven sealed containers of human waste that we had to dispose of. So, it's, hopefully, right when you improve things, that normally improves the overall care for the area. But again, yeah, Chief is right, we have had other issues out here. I'm not sure, making better, better parking helps it, but it, I don't know that it hurts either, so.
Yeah, that, that was my question. So, how will improved parking help your cause as a Public Works Director to allow your staff to do the job that currently, under the current parking ordinance, says you're not, not allowed to do if vehicles are parked there?
I think it's treated in a rural way, so maybe as it becomes more, more developed out, it's, you know, it can be managed in a more appropriate way. That side, maybe, too, as we widen, and everything that would be managed, if we're gonna omit a landscape strip, wouldn't need to be managed. I'm sure we have to make an arrangement with planning on street tree replacements and somewhere else, but there wouldn't be much left to manage on the north side of that road.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to point that out for everybody. That, that, that was the, the cause a couple of weeks ago, and, and the primary point for that parking change ordinance is, is that picture right there. We, we had a, a motor home there that we couldn't get rid of, so I, I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Chief. Did we have any other comments or questions about this grant application?
Dorothy had her hand up.
Councilmember Hoag, and then Councilmember Lengel.
Well, I'm in agreement with the rest of council, that I've heard from that said that it'd be nice to maintain some of the parking if possible, but, I mean, I guess that's something that we need to talk about more, if there's parking issues there, I don't know. I also think, I think that we need to think about safety with the sidewalks on that road. And when I'm looking at your budget impacts, it looks like there would be, I'd like to know more about what the budget impacts would be. It sounds like there's gonna be additional matching fund sources, or REIT that you're looking at.
On this slide, yeah, we, we just put down what funds are available, since it is a capital program listed on our chip, as far as sidewalk, you know, missing sidewalks. So, it's eligible for these, these programs you spend on it.
It'd just be nice to know, kind of, if, if you're expecting it to go over, I'd like to know early on.
Right. And I think, like I said, we kept the older budget, knowing we have our own sidewalk project bidding soon, so we can understand quite quickly what that impact would be. The, the need now is the council's support to apply for the grant. Again, should we be awarded it, that's a different story. But yes, over the two eighty, which is the minimum, the maximum they will assign for this phase, that's the max, we can't ask for more. So, anything we do here would be coming out of pocket. That's over the two eighty, and the current estimate with design does get us to four sixty-six.
Do we need to vote on?
No. Per the Agenda Bill, we have till the next meeting. If, if everybody's ready to just tell us to apply, you can certainly, you know, waive your rules and just direct staff to apply, as the Agenda Bill says. But the time is due after the next meeting, so we have one more meeting to consider, should you need to. Yes. How's that? But it sounds like we have a lot of things to add to the next meeting, anyway, so somebody wants to go for it.
And I'm okay with moving forward with this, as is with the caveat that we'd be looking for, to make sure with the, the Mobile Home, Manufactured Home Park, and the city trying to make sure that the residents had appropriate parking, parking and doing what we could to make that happen. This has been an area that's been really underserved in parking, in street, in sidewalks, bike lanes, and lighting for quite a while. And this is definitely one of our last opportunities to get this type of funding for a project. So, oh, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Lengel, I did not see your hand, and I just saw it. Sorry about that.
I was actually gonna make a motion that we authorize AB twenty dash thirty-seven, King County block grant application.
You need to suspend your rules first, Nick.
Yes. You need to suspend.
We gotta amend our rules, because we don't have, okay, so I make a motion that, that we amend our rules.
It would be suspend, not amend.
Oh, I'm sorry, suspend our rules. I'm getting kind of tired over here. Suspend our rules, and we have to vote on that first.
I second. McHenry? Any further discussion on suspending the rules to be able to take a vote on the grant application? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes unanimously. And with that, Councilmember Lengel?
Okay.
I make a motion that we authorize AB twenty dash thirty-seven, King County block grant application for road improvements in a block grant-eligible area. It's gonna serve low-income people, so.
Do we have a second?
Michelle Hoag, second.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes unanimously. And then, we'll move on to our last item of unfinished business, Agenda Bill twenty dash twenty-eight, Public Works Engineering Building and Roof Replacement for Discussion and/or Decision, Public Works. So, Mr. Lenashevsky.
Did we lose Matt Iyer? I, I think we lost Matt Iyer.
And I, I don't see him in the waiting room.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure he wasn't waiting, like, got knocked off. I just noticed he was missing.
He, he might have gotten knocked off. We just had another lightning strike, and even my internet said we've got a bad connection, so.
Okay.
And I, I think that we can probably check with him to make sure he was okay with that. I suspect he would be, and we can reflect the record, if possible, if he does come on and was knocked off by lightning, but we only have one item of business left, and regardless of his vote, the motion passes. So, on unfinished business, Agenda Bill twenty dash twenty, Public Works Engineering Building Roof Replacement. Mr. Lenashevsky.
Yeah. Bringing this forward, I know there was discussion at the last meeting on it, so it's just back on the agenda. I think, just confirming, you know, with finance today, seventy-five thousand dollars that was set aside, which is part of the funding, or the funding for this type of work, did come from the general fund, so there are other things that if council had others on doing with that, they could, but there's no other news on the project.
Councilmember McHenry, and then Councilmember Brad Nicky.
So, I was curious with the police department issue with the, is it the HVAC system? Or the, how does, does that affect this at all? I mean, because I don't know what that would cost, or if the priority would now go to that. So, could you just let us know what your thoughts are about that?
You know, I will let my thoughts be known on this, is that this is continued deferred maintenance that we discussed in the budget process for the nineteen-twenty budget. And council just agreed to release that funding to do this work, and I think it is critically important to do necessary work on the buildings that our employees house, particularly since this roof is, I believe, thirty years old, and well past its useful life. The police department building will be dealt with on a, on a different level, I think, at this point, but hopefully, through, they do need a new HVAC system, we're gonna have to go through the funds, but we do have a list of identified deferred maintenance that needs to be taken care of, that we've been trying to get approval of for quite a while.
I totally, I, I'm getting, oh, sorry, can I? No, I was wondering, too. I did state that I absolutely support this. I just wasn't sure if, you know, we just needed to quickly move money, that's available now. Do we need to first take care of that, which seems like a immediate health issue?
The re, the reality is that we do have seventy-five thousand dollars in the Deferred Maintenance Fund. We have reserves, we have contingency, so we have the cash regardless to get both projects done. But I see Councilmember Lengel's hand and Councilmember Napland, but first, if, since your point, Councilmember McHenry, I would like to allow Chief Hert to speak to the HVAC issue as well. If his hand's still up, or if he forgot to take it down.
No, no, thanks, Mayor. You know, I don't have a whole lot to add, other than what I've already said, but I, I will say, we'll say one thing. For more than six years, I've asked for money to be put aside for HVAC systems and those types of repairs for the city, and for whatever reason, it never makes it in the budget. I have probably five AC units, six, if you count the AC unit, that actually houses the, or, or supports the city's server, which is actually part of the budget amendment this year that, that went out this year for over seven thousand dollars. I, I've constantly asked for money to be put aside for these things, and for whatever reason, whether it's just unavailable money or whatever, it's never happened. So, I, I've tried, I, I've tried to alert the city to, to the need for these types of things, as, as, as Steve has, and Laura has, with, with deferred maintenance and projecting these things. And, and we've limped along. Again, we're almost at twice the life cycle of, of a facility, and never put money away for it. I, I, I've tried, I've, I've tried every year, and now we're at a point, I, I, Councilmember, Councilmember McHenry, I can't tell you what it's gonna cost to replace an HVAC system, and I can't tell you if we need to replace the HVAC system. But we've got to start thinking about these things, and putting these monies aside, that, that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Hert. Councilmember Lengel, Councilmember Napland, and then Councilmember Brad Nicky.
I, thank you. I think I've mentioned before that we really need a long-term asset management plan, and, and we talk about it in terms of, you know, sewers and pipes and things like that, but I really am focused on facilities. And the other one, of course, is really understanding the long-term replacement liabilities around the wastewater treatment facility. My comment here is that I don't, it's not that I don't, I, I, I've totally supported just giving a steed the right, you know, the right to make decisions around the seventy-five thousand earlier this past year, but I, I'm really concerned about the police department, and, and how this, this is evolving, and I would really like to know if they can flush out whether their system is really failing or not, before we go ahead with the, the roof replacement. It's not that I'm anti-roof replacement, it just feels like the police department's system is a real serious thing. When you have that many employees reacting to an air exchange, it could be a lot of things. And it could be very expensive, I think Chief Hert's right about that. So, it's, it's not an anti-roof replacement. You can patch a roof, and you can patch a roof in the middle of dead, you know, dead winter, but it is, I am really worried about the, what he reported tonight about the police station. So, it's just a comment more than anything else.
Thank you. Councilmember Napland?
I just wanted to say really quick, I, I'm super uncomfortable about approving when we only have one bid, and it's such a simple roof line. It's, I mean, comparing it to my, my residential roof, you know, obviously, is a different type of project, but I had a very complicated roof line. I put cedar shake on, I mean, and it was so much less than what this is. And I, I, I can't judge if that's a fair price or not a fair price, and typically, you get multiple bids, and I, I just am not a fan of approving, accepting a bid when all you got is- And I, I just am not a fan of approving, accepting a bid when all you got is one. It just doesn't feel like the right thing to do, so. I would not be supportive.
Thank you, Member, Councilmember Napland. Councilmember Iyer?
I'm, I'm good with this. I think we need to replace the roof. We're going to have to eventually anyway. So I think it's, I think we're down to the end. So I'm in support of moving forward.
I will, I don't see any other, oh, Count Mayor Person Remington, and then I will add my comments as well. And Councilmember Bridniky.
I do appreciate the concerns, especially with some of the other expenditures. I think we have money to do both. I'd replace the roof. I've done a lot of city facilities for the fire service, firehouses. And that price seems in the ballpark. I, I do agree, it'd be nice to have an additional bid, but I'd move forward with getting the roof replaced. And certainly I'd ask Chief Hert to get us some numbers on what it takes to do the work we need at the police station as well.
Thank you. Mayor, Councilmember Bridniky.
Yeah, okay. I was supportive of this the last meeting. And I think that we want to replace the roof during season when it's, you know, summer is a good time. And it seems like with the COVID situation that some people, as far as contractors go, might be very happy to do the job for us. And I think just, you know, safety wise, and it's a prudent thing to do. I don't have a problem with supporting the roof going through and getting fixed. We really do have to do maintenance on so many things and I definitely support this.
And the one council member we haven't heard from yet on this item is Councilmember Hoag, which do you have anything to add?
I do. I am definitely in support of maintaining our properties as much as I was trying to get a conversation at the last meeting around prioritization. And I still feel prioritization, our priorities are going to be changing in the next six to nine months. So I still am passionate about prioritizing, but I'm in supportive of this. I agree with Councilmember Napland that it'd be nice to get another bid. We might find that the next bid is, is better in light of, you know, I don't think I could put a roof on my house today. So there's probably roofers that are, you know, anxious to get a job. So, so I just, I think it might be good to get another bid is all I'm thinking.
Okay, thank you. I just, I do want to, I do want to point out that if we go up for another bid, it's not just the cost of going out for another bid. It's the cost of the staff time necessary to do the work as well as review the bid. And that adds up very quickly and could quickly overrun cost savings potentially. I just also want to make clear for the public record and remind council that many of these deferred maintenance projects that we've brought forward, including the engineering building roof, have gone undone for more than 10 years. And by continuing to defer maintenance, we're continuing to defer our liability and putting our employees at risk and making that the, potentially making the projects cost much longer in the long run. As well as you have the issue of projects backing up. We are already backed up. These are things that have been identified in building inspection reports a year ago. And I think, to be clear, I think that our responsibility as a city government is to main the, maintain the infrastructure that we own, particularly those buildings that contain our employees. So waiting on this project could have much more significant pro, results than doing the work when it needs to be done. And, and again, the, the build, the roof replacement, the HVAC police system in the police department, that building is more than 50% past its useful life. It is time to take action and start taking care of our facilities that our employees house or we're going to be spending a lot more taxpayer money in the long run. I think Chief Hert and Public Works Director Lenashevsky had their hands up. Chief Hert, did you have your hand up still?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I did, and I just wanted to make a comment and, and thank you, Michelle, for your comments. You know, we have, we're at the, we're at the point about growing our facility, but we're not asking for a new facility. We are asking that the facility that we continue to occupy is healthy. But that's all it is. Again, I don't know what the cost will be to replace that system, nor do I know for sure if we need to replace our system. I just want council to be aware, as Michelle said, you know, we put money away and we try to prioritize things, but things are fluid. Everything we do right now is fluid. Even in, if you look at the recovery plan that the police department provided to you a few days ago, everything's fluid. We, we could, we could get to one point next week and have to regress back the following week, four or five weeks. I, I, I don't have the answers. I've tried, you know, Dana, if Dana's still on here, are you still here, Dana? You know, I've done everything I can to review my budget and cut numbers. And, and I think that the, the total number for the biennium right now is 300,000 that I've cut to give back. So if it takes 50 or 60,000 to replace an HVAC system, I, I would expect and appreciate support for that. It's, it's about the health and safety of my staff. I'm not asking for a new facility, though we've outgrown the one we're in. It's time for, for us as a city probably to look at something long-term, citywide. But right now, it's about the health and safety of my staff. That's it.
Thank you, Chief. Ms. Mason, did you have anything to add before Mr. Lenashevsky pipes in?
I was just going to see total budget adjustments for the chief, but I can, I can add, just put those in the chat if needed, so.
So Director Lenashevsky.
Just making a comment, we all would rather have more than one bid. So if there is any sort of inkling on that, you know, the proper thing to do is, is, you know, if we fail the motion at some point, then we reject the bids, formally then rebid. We can't bid shop, I can't call somebody else, you know, the bid has been advertised and open. So that's just process. We may be able to do it expeditiously. I know the mayor's concerned about timing. So there are, of course, costs to do things over, whether it's staff time or physical costs for advertising through the paper. But just procedurally, just want to make sure I made that clear. One, we would all like more than one bid. Two, if we don't like this, we need to formally reject. So then three, we can make a rebid reasonable so we don't get challenged by a losing, i.e. one losing bidder. That's all.
All right. Any further questions or comments by council? Mayor Person Remington, you've unmuted yourself, so I assume you are, you have something to add.
You know, as much as I'd like to have additional bids, reality is we put it out, we had one. You know, we probably could delay. My, my own experience says that's a decent price for this type of rough. I haven't been up to look at it, so I, I can't speak too technically about it. But I, I am ready to move forward and, and, and with some confidence and say, let's, let's replace that engineering roof. Is this our second touch on this?
Second or third? I know definitely second.
Well, if, I would start by saying, you know, I, I would move that we suspend our, our rule for three-touch in preparation to move forward with getting this roof replaced.
All right, do we have a second on that?
McHenry, second.
Thank you, Councilmember McHenry. Any discussion on suspension of the rules? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. There are no no's, so let the record reflect, the motion passed unanimously. Councilmember Remington?
Mayor, I oppose that we, council approve Agenda Bill 20-28, Public Works Engineering Building Roof Replacement and move forward with getting it fixed.
I second, McHenry.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this Agenda Bill? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
Clerk, will you please take a roll call vote?
I will, as soon as I find the right piece of paper. Councilmember Bridniky?
Aye.
Councilmember Iyer?
Aye.
Councilmember McHenry?
Aye.
Councilmember Remington?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoag?
Aye.
Councilmember Napland? No. Councilmember Lengel?
Aye.
The ayes have it, motion passes.
Thank you. And with that, we have no further business this evening. So unless there are objections, we are adjourned at 10:18 PM. Thank you all.
Thanks.